Okay. All right, did anybody want to?
I don't see anything.
Okay. All right, so we'll open the meeting at 6:02. I'll make a motion that we add one item to new business, which is the acceptance of gifts for the Veterans Memorial. Here's a second. All right. And then I will make a motion that we accept the minutes from the previous meeting as amended. We just struck out one name who wasn't here and then one note on the, one of my comments about public comment. There's that. All right. We'll move into public comment. First name on this, here's John Mark.
Yeah, I feel it would be easier for Public Works doing the snow removal that the trees, the Lakeshore House up to the general store and the post ramps that are up to there were removed and the cement base that the post ramps are on. They have the utility poles and the steps and the ramps to maneuver around besides that.
All right. Um, thank you, John. David Burke.
Uh, yeah, this is in regard to, uh, snow removal on the sidewalk in front of my house. Uh, they've plowed that with the plow truck for years and now they seem to be wanting to take the lawn with it. About two or three feet of the lawn is starting to be plowed and last year big gouges were taken out of the lawn. And if you're gonna wanna put snow on my lawn for snow removal, they need to clean up the sand. Last year, two or three wheelbarrows of sand were cleaned out and it wasn't done by the town. So that needs to be taken care of if you're gonna dump snow on my lawn.
All right, that's good. Thank you, David. Um, Jim.
That was insane.
Sorry?
That was insane.
Oh, okay. Just signing up. I did that once at a school board meeting. Uh, Richard.
Yeah, a couple things.
Yeah.
The one about the seat meeting here.
I'm sorry?
The one about the seat meeting here and so many people, it has been probably should be seating somewhere bigger.
We could, yeah, I spoke with the, um, uh, with MMA about, uh, all the arrangements at our meetings. And so basically the, uh, if we anticipate a large crowd, we should move the meetings to a space that can accommodate them because anybody has the right to attend the meeting in person. Um, with regard to social distancing requirements specifically, uh, those, those guidelines were rescinded along with the end of the state of emergency. Uh, so there's no specific guidelines right now about distancing.
One more there.
Yep.
And, um, I wanted to explain to you how you file with the county.
So, um, I don't actually know if there's a formal process, but what I would recommend is just writing down, uh, what your, your issues, what your issue is or issues are and delivering that to the county office. All right? Thanks. All right, public comments closed. We'll move into select board reports. Uh, the item on the agenda here is public Wi-Fi update. And, uh, for this, we're still scheduling a follow-up meeting with Axiom for nothing specific to, um, to report here. Sue?
Um, I was just wondering, I know we've only had a week out, but, uh, Public Works, um, has that been shared with Stephen?
Um, yes, I did give him a copy of that.
And I particularly think he sees that he missed.
Yep, he hasn't mentioned anything, but I did give him a copy of it.
On that topic specifically, um, we should pick up again the broader conversation about Public Works and what we want to do internally versus hiring for contractors. And that was connected way back when, uh, with the road plan, the Public Works plan, and then also the equipment. And I see further on the agenda here, we have a conversation about the trucks. So we can bring all of these conversations back together again, uh, maybe in the, in the new year, in January. Uh, Eric?
Yeah, I, uh, talking to a few people there. They'd like to see, and I'd like to see as well too, a kind of a check on the past five years of operations of the town. And mostly what I'd like to see is something to this effect is to take the year 2015 and have a balance of what we had in our bank account and take each individual operating year, no matter what the cycle was, budget versus expenditures in what was in the account that year, 16, and then the same for each. And then come up with a final balance saying that this is what we have and compare that to what we have in the bank. It's just to alleviate a lot of concerns that have been come over the last few years. And I don't know if that would be really difficult, if we could do that permanently or not, but, uh, it probably would have more credibility if it was an audit.
Yeah, I think we could probably just do a monthly, uh, actuals report from Trio.
Trio should have that.
And then a monthly statement.
The interesting thing about that, um, that I noticed is I have printed off the like year-to-date things, like I gave you a copy or John a copy.
I don't have a copy. I've got some year-to-date from.
Okay, yeah, and, and I'm not sure why, but a lot of the, um, the lines have, the line items have negative numbers. And I know that, you know, sometimes if something gets paid out of a wrong account or something like that during accounts payable, there needs to be a journal entry done to sort of correct that. So I'm not sure the reasoning for all, all those negatives. I, I can't imagine that all those budgets have been overspent. So to go through all of that and kind of figure out why, um, you know, one example was, um, you know, the, the fire department stipend account was negative. And so we did take a look at that, Elena and I, and it just turned out that one of the fire department payroll lines, it, it had the wrong account in there. So the, the money was coming out of the stipend account instead of the payroll account. So it could just be stuff like that, um, but it may be very lengthy to, to figure all that out. Maybe with the help of the auditor, it might be faster. I could talk to them and see what they might be able to do. As far as helping us figure that out more quickly, they just may have ways to, and be so familiar with it all that they could just pick things out really quickly. So it might be worth a conversation with them.
I think for those things specifically, so either the auditor or an accountant could probably help us fix those individual line items, but the net, the totals should be the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
At the bottom line, compare that bottom line, uh, actual against the bank statements. And you should be able to just print like, not the actual statements, but just the, the cash balance.
And the balance, yeah.
Yeah, just the total, so I would think for that year, you know, budget, expenditures, balance, you know.
Sometimes you have some credit share and some of them are.
Yep, it should be.
Yeah. And you gotta figure that in at the bottom.
Yeah. But anyway, it's just something that I think would alleviate a little bit of, there are some issues out there and I can understand. You know, I, everything may be perfectly fine, but.
Yeah, it should be straightforward to pull that.
Uh, any status on code enforcement?
Um.
Or is that an item here?
Yes, that is an item on the.
Okay, I was good with that.
Okay.
I went to check the, uh, pavement distance on the Willamantic Road where they paved from Stewart Road to the, whatever, but what town management, uh, some of them, what's the town line? And, uh, too much slippage in the snow. I couldn't do that. I, uh, it was off 200 feet less. It was off 200 feet almost less. I did it going down on one side of the road and back the other, but I could tell the thing was slipping. So I gotta wait for a good warm day. I used the wheel there. But, uh, the other point is Marty, did somebody move that metal post to the actual property line?
Oh, I don't know.
Because it has been moved.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that, yeah.
And it wasn't to the correct spot?
It's been moved to the correct spot.
Oh, I, I.
Cause the correct spot had a slate monument that is the Monson Town Line.
Yeah.
And now that metal post has been moved down.
Oh, I hadn't, I hadn't even known that it wasn't there. Just I knew Daniel thought the turnaround was the town line.
Yeah.
And hadn't noticed the, the sign, um, but I'd never heard that it was in the wrong spot.
Well, I winged right past it there where I thought it was and I said, didn't move to the right spot, so.
I don't know who did that.
Um, I did check, I didn't get ahold of Julie Anderson, but I talked to a buddy about the procedures for the selectmen's meetings. And he said that in his time, and he was a selectman for nine years, he was a selectman for the first year and the chair for six years. And he said there were no written rules of procedure. And, uh, and he said that we, we did not use either Robert's rules of order or anything else. It was something passed down from generation to generation, so. Uh, let's see. And, uh, let me see if that's on the list. Has anybody talked to the group that would develop ordinance for the dangerous living commissions?
That's on.
Is it?
Yeah, property.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That's all we got?
All righty. Town manager report.
Okay, um, so just a few things. Um, the town truck has been having a lot of issues lately. Um, it was stuck in park. The lights weren't working. It wasn't starting. The plow wasn't moving. Uh, it was taken up to Jack Whittier who, um, determined that there was an electrical issue or computer issue going on. He was able to rig some things so that it wouldn't, that it wouldn't come out of park. Um, he unplugged the, the ground from the battery so that the dash lights wouldn't drain the battery um, cause that was why the battery was dying. Um, so I think they have to do that now. Steve did poly fuses out and get the dome lights working. Um, he didn't replace the fuse or pull it out or put it back. He just removed it and the lights came on. So, um, it's, it's removed. He did buy some, um, he did something else that did make the, the brake lights work. Um, he had to go to Tractor Supply and buy some, uh, backup lights because he wasn't able to see, you know, in the darker hours to back up. So just to put it out there that, um, that's what's going on. I, at the time, he had no brake lights or taillights or anything like that and wasn't sure. I, I didn't really think that was safe to drive it like that all the way to Bangor. But now that it's working, I'm kind of thinking, you know, send them down there and, and at least get it looked at and see what we wanna do. Steve feels like he can limp it through the winter cause really all he uses it for is just right, right here around town. So I guess that's a decision that we need to just decide what we wanna do. And if it can safely be driven somewhere, be looked at, maybe we wanna consider doing that, just see what they say. So if it, if, if that's okay and everybody thinks that's a good idea, yeah.
Well, he was thinking we could limp it through the winter, but we might wanna be thinking when it starts to soften up on the dirt road. If, uh, do you think you can access the gravel source in the winter or spring early when it starts to soften or not?
I don't know. Probably when it starts to soften. I don't see why not.
To me, when I've looked at them dirt roads the last two years, those bad holes, when they get about oh, six or eight inches deep, so we could put a whole load of gravel, that would be the time to start and be, you know, working at it. And that's gonna get them through.
Yeah. Okay.
So you might wanna think about that some too, you know, rather than just lipping it through the window then.
Okay.
Right, probably through, through that squish cycle, for example.
Right.
Can we, how does the tuckling mark?
Um, I'm not sure what it's got the mileage on it. I don't think we've had it all that long. I think probably just five or six years. Do you know, remember when that truck was bought or know what year it is?
2010.
Was that new? Was that new?
No. Yeah, it must be, uh, five years old anyways.
Since we've had it?
Since we've had it, yeah. Five, six, yeah.
Okay. Um.
It's had 50,000 miles on it when, when the town had it. Yeah, I think it probably must've been five years ago.
Okay. Um, I did mention that the, you thought the key might be with the manuals in the garage. Um, he said he's been through everything and he never saw it, but he was gonna take another look. Um, I haven't heard that he has found it. Um, but well, he did say that Pete Coughlin had said that he could get him another key. So that's probably what we're gonna do. And Pete had also told him that that sign's not for winter use. So by the spring, we'll, we'll make sure that we have a key and we're able to, to get it worked on. Um, the town manager position was posted on Tuesday. Um, we're just gonna run it until the position is filled, see what happens. Um, I was able to, um, get the job description that, that Greenville had for their CEO search, um, to kind of use as a template. I think that will be helpful. Uh, they had thought, when I spoke to them originally, that they might be able to help out with their code enforcement officer, maybe loan them out one day a week or something and, um, but he did call me this afternoon and just say that they, they, he has just too much on his plate right now. Um, so he wasn't interested. I did call Gelford. I spoke to their guy. Um, he also feels like he has too much going on to take on another town. And I was talking to Milo about the ordinance issues. So while I was on the phone, I just mentioned it to them as well and they were gonna mention it to their CEO and I, I never heard from him, but, um, so anyway, I kind of have something to work with now. So we're gonna just get that posted and see who comes along.
Did you speak with Brian from Dover?
Nope.
He might be, this is from Monson, right by that.
Oh, I know who he is.
Yeah, it's on the roster.
I'd ask him about that. I'd ask him about that a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, he said he was too busy, but we can ask him again.
Yeah.
I think that's probably what we're gonna run into. I understand a lot of towns are having trouble with that, so. Um, okay, and I did meet with Mike Carey from CMP about relocating the pole down at the transfer station. Uh, behind where the pole is now, there is a property marker. And so he had had it, uh, a post where he was thinking move it back a few feet. He showed me where the marker was. And what we ended up deciding was to move it as far back as we could without running into that other property line. So he's gonna take care of that and he said it should be done within the next few weeks. And then we'll be able to widen that out.
Is that, so there, is it that there's two markers there? The first markers where it will go to and the second markers are property lines?
Uh, the, the property line, I believe, is a, is a metal post. Um, there, there might be, I think he had two with ribbons on them.
Yeah.
One was where he was thinking and then one was where he was thinking was about as far back as we could go. Um, so we, we picked the as far back as we could go.
John?
Uh, over on Blanchett Road, I think it's the first trench from a past Camp Comfort Road, just past the beach there.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a two cross by, up at the top of the pole. And they've got a metal bracket that holds that trench from over the years over one of those bars.
Yeah.
And there's a bottom piece that's supposed to be bolted to the pole. That's come loose and it's off to the side. And that trench from the children's pretty bad.
Oh, okay.
While you're talking to them, you might wanna mention it to them.
Yeah, okay.
If that came down, it could cause some problems.
I would say so. Okay. All right.
Winter lightning, maybe.
Right? All right.
See those poles get worked pretty hard. Like the one out here by the gas station is really holding the whole thing together.
Okay. Um, still looking for volunteers for the road committee, so if anybody's interested.
I talked to Steve, this is how you pronounce it.
Oh, Ralph?
Ralph. And he said he interested, okay.
Yeah?
The thing with what you talked about on the road committee, you wanted the plan all in place by like September 30th. Well, where isn't any of us can predict what the weather's gonna be or the winters or anything.
Right.
And to me, you gotta kind of take stuff if it happens.
Yeah.
See where your bad stuff is the year before and know you've got that. But maybe other stuff come up. You can't really do a whole plan.
Right, but you can probably do the majority of a plan. And then if you have things that come up that are unexpected, just, you know, I think that we probably plan on that anyway, cause there's always gonna be stuff like that that comes along. Um, and then Eric actually mentioned the, the paving already. Um, so the contract does state that the paving will go, um, to the, the Monson-Willamantic Town Line, but it also has some footage there, how many feet that is. So that was why Eric was measuring to, to see if it met, measured. Um, because what we're thinking happened was they were just measuring to the incorrect town line. So, um, but once he's got some clear road to work with, we'll get a, a better measurement.
This is with regard to the all-state contract?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause they also build based on material. So even if there were errors in the linear footage, we would just, we wouldn't have gotten, we shouldn't have gotten billed for that last count.
Yeah, I was just curious about the distance.
Yeah.
Not really so much for the material, but just to see from the point that it was painted by the Stewart Road to that whatever location. If they used the wrong location that was across from the turnaround or went all the way down to the monument. My guess is they just measured to the incorrect location.
Yes.
Oh, it's written in the contract.
You build on material. It's counted, but it's, you, you're billed on material.
Whether it's from Stewart Road towards the town line?
It, it's gonna have both, it's gonna have the, uh, written description, a linear footage count and then, uh, materials, um, estimate. Yeah. All right.
Um, so that's, that's what I have for now, unless anybody has any questions.
All right. Town committee reports, festival committee. I think we don't have anybody here, right? One thing on my mind on this was just to make sure, so for Snow Roller this year, it's a, it's the same, it's overlapping with the event for Bicentennial, right? So do we need to have anything in place for kind of Snow Roller? Or is it all, I'm thinking like posters, this, that and the other thing, or is it all taken care of right by Bicentennial?
As far as I have heard and seen this online too, but Dawn has mentioned that Bicentennial is not covering.
Right.
The Snow Roller. Um, and I know she was talking to, taking that on.
I think for the games specifically, but I, I'm, I think what popped into my head was as far as advertising and stuff.
Yeah.
Is there anything we need to be doing?
Didn't Bobby and Pete foul out?
Yeah.
They did.
Yeah.
Sandra has her hand up. Did you wanna add anything, Sandra?
Oh, just as, I, I think that Snow Roller will be under control. It'll be worked on in the next, um, 30 days or so. So we will have material for advertising, um, publicity, people in charge of the various things. That is the current plan and I can't see any reason that that won't happen.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, all right, Bicentennial committee then.
Am I it?
Yeah. I think you're up.
So, um, Bicentennial committee, things are proceeding. The brochure is still not ready, but it should be soon. There was a great deal of merchandise sold at Kris Kringle, which is great. Um, and more merchandise coming in and will be available for sale at various places around town. So things are proceeding apace, perhaps not as quickly as we'd like, but they are moving along.
Sandra, um, I attended the Business Association meeting the other night and it was asked about, um, and, and I related to Marty to put at least on the town sign about the kickoff on New Year's Day. Um, but do you know if there, there is a poster ready yet to put on the website and Facebook page?
There will be when I get to it, which I may be able to do tomorrow. So, soon. I do know a press release is, um, prepared by Joanna that will be, um, out shortly. And we were on the Bangor Daily News site earlier today with initial publicity. So things are moving as far as that goes.
David Burke, communication committee?
Um, I'll, I'll do this with Sandra, right? So Sandra and I, um, did the table at Kris Kringle Fair and we sold almost $300 worth of dog treats, cat, uh, catnip mice and lovely hats at Sandra Day. So we have a lot, um, you know, going in an account, which is good for projects in the future. And there's more dog business up there, I expect. Anything else, Sandra, on communication?
Excellent, thanks. All right, new business, plot sale at Church Church Cemetery.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, so Tyler has a letter as well, but Darryl Whitmer had called me up and, um, he would like to be buried when the time comes in the church cemetery up here. Um, it had been decided, I don't know how long ago or by who, um, that we weren't gonna be selling anymore, um, plots out of that cemetery because it was full. However, uh, with all the work that was done over the summer, the, the graveyard company that, that worked on it and, um, Glenn Poole and Bennett's, um, they did find a space, um, number 48, right inside the gate that appears to be an empty plot and they all agree that it, that it's empty. Um, so Darryl would like to purchase the plot and, uh, be buried there. I'm not sure what that procedure would be. I don't know if it was an official thing that it was, you know, decided that there would be no more people going there or if it's something we can just say, well, if there's a spot. Um, I don't know, but if anybody does know, um, how that works.
We, we have a procedure for the plots at other cemeteries, right?
Right. The only thing is, I mean, the, the procedure for, for selling the plot and everything, you know, we just register it with the registry deeds and, and all of that. Um, but just as far, I had just been told since I started here that we're not doing that anymore. So I don't know what the procedure would be, if there even would be one, to just change our mind now that we know that there is a, a spot available. So I don't know if the, the letter says anything different. That's all just based on a conversation that I had with him. So I don't know if your letter says more or.
No, same.
Anything like that.
Yeah. David?
Well, I noticed there are a lot of problems finding headstones or finding what people had. My only question is, it's, they sell this plot, I think they're oldish. What do you, what did you get up bone?
Um, I did talk to.
And somebody else's plot.
I did talk to Glenn about that today, cause I just confirmed it with him when he, cause he stopped by. Um, he did say that it really, really does look like, like there's, there's no one there. There's no record of it anywhere. There's no, was nothing found. Um, we did say perhaps that, um, put a stipulation in there that if anything just was uncovered, um, during the digging, that, you know, it would have to go somewhere else. Um, but they, they are pretty sure and these people, um, that, that did the work, um, are pretty, pretty knowledgeable and good at what they do. So it, it really, and the, the Bennett's felt the same way that, um, so everybody's in agreement that it really does look like it's available.
Let me just tell you that five years I worked in cemeteries, digging plots and stuff like that when I was in high school. And every year where there was not supposed to be a body, there was a body.
Really?
Okay, so it, it was either, mostly because back then they didn't use metal vaults or cement vaults. They just used wooden caskets, you know? And a hundred years goes by and there's not much left.
Yeah.
But you do find the skull and you do find the bones because I had the opportunity once to get the skull right in my spade as I was digging it. And my Jim, my cousin said, uh, Eric, look over your shovel. Cause I wasn't paying attention. I was just throwing dirt. And I said, oh, so we better get a hold of Welder, you know, he was our boss.
Well, that happened with Gilford just a couple of years ago and the main road there.
Yeah.
There.
They were.
Well, yeah.
Septic or something.
Yeah, that was where Tacco's, uh, Tacco's used to live. But anyway, so it does happen. The only way you can really do that is to do that, uh, uh, sal, what do you call it? That testing seismic, because there's a difference in your ground. But anyway, so don't be surprised.
Is it, uh, is, is 48 on one side and 49 on the other side of the gate? Do you know?
I believe that that's what Glenn said. Darryl, do you know if, if 48 and 49 are on opposite sides of the gate?
Uh, that's correct, yeah. One is on one side. When you go in the gate, 48 is to the right and 49 is to the left. And incidentally, this is not just for me, but for also, also for my wife. So there's two, two plot, I mean, two, uh, room for two people to be buried there.
I think as far as the, um, whatever may have been said in the past about it being closed, we could probably check with, and, and then they might not have an answer for this, but they could probably point us in the right direction for, you know, this is a situation, we have no record of that. Is it up to the discretion of the board or is there certain procedures to use? But otherwise, we already have a procedure for selling plots, so.
Right, exactly. So I maybe, I would think that probably people who have been here forever, you know, like maybe some lawyers, somebody who was around when the decision was made. I don't know how long ago that was, but somebody might know if, if they were here or on the select board or the town clerk or something like that and just remember. It could be just, okay, it's full.
Right.
That's all. Which probably was the case.
Yeah.
Right?
Did you have, um, you have Julie?
No, I have not talked to Julie.
She's been, she was here for a long time. She would probably know.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be our best bet.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Yeah, I, Glenn is working with a map that goes back to the Civil War era. And I think, uh, that map was about as definite as they had. Uh, I had done one burial for the Matthews, Bob and Grace, Robert and Grace Matthews in that cemetery. So I think the decision to not bury there anymore was just sort of an evolved position, thinking that all of, all of the sites were, were occupied and no one had any further information until recently when Glenn updated the map and Tootie and Wayne went over the whole thing. And then this main cemetery, cemetery restoration, business was called in to also review what was there and try to, try to update everything. So all of them are looking at this site and saying there has never been anything recorded in, in plot 48 or 49. And I think there's three or four others that they believe are also available. Uh, I mean, there just hasn't been a mad rush of people to be buried at the Churchyard Cemetery. So I don't think it's going to open the floodgates. There's probably a lot of people who wouldn't want to be caught dead buried there. But, um, aside from that, I mean, this is, this is pretty much probably a one-time request.
Okay. So what I'll, what I'll do is I'll just try to find, you know, maybe reach out to Julie or, you know, somebody who might know for sure. And then I, I guess, as long as it's all okay and if you guys are okay, we'll just move ahead with the regular procedure as far as selling the plot and hold up. Okay?
Thank you, Darryl.
Thank you. Property maintenance ordinance.
Uh, so last week, um, when Sue was here, Sue Hoogler, um, there was some discussion about what we might do. Um, so someone had asked me to, uh, reach out to Milo and see what they had done because they've done a lot and had a lot of success cleaning up their town. Um, so what they did was, um, they, they passed the property maintenance ordinance. And that was how they went about solving their problem. Um, it's, she did send me a copy. Um, don't believe I have it here with me. Um, but if that was something that we decided we wanted to move forward with and their, their code enforcement officer enforces it. Um, she did say that there's, there was actually only one person that they actually needed to really go after and they, as long as they can see that people are making an effort, they don't really go after them. Um, so just something to consider, that's, that's what they did and it's been pretty effective for them. There's, I thought some of it was a little, a little strict, you know? I mean, you know, as far as you can only have a yard sale for three days and, you know, things like that. So I mean, but it's a template and we could just make it just to suit ourselves. And as far as, you know, Eric had mentioned something, um, about dangerous living conditions and, and things like that. Um, and unsanitary, unsafe conditions and, um, how that would address that. But if, if it's a, you can't have trash and garbage and roads crawling all over the place, then it just creates more sanitary conditions anyway, so it might just eliminate that problem. So that was what I found out about Milo. And if, um, if, if that's something that everybody's interested in pursuing, we can just start, start working on that and fine-tuning it.
Can you scan it and send it to us, Sam?
I can do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
And as far as process goes, so generally we would have our discussion here and then we would hold a public hearing and then it would get voted on in either town meeting or special town meeting. Do you know offhand if there is a time constraint between when you have your public hearing and when it goes to town meeting?
Um, I don't, I don't know that, but it's probably pretty easy to find out.
Yeah, I'm just curious if we could, you know, do what we had to do to solicit public input and then, you know, maybe we don't need to have, immediately have a special town meeting to pass it the next week, but.
Right.
Accumulate a couple of items.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or hold off till the next whole town meeting, but.
We need to put in force.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
All right. And then the last item here is acceptance of flagpole and slate slab from Veterans Memorial. So we had previously discussed, um, there's the pool's donation?
Um, yes, uh, so he explained to me that, um, they donated the money to the Historical Society and the Historical Society bought the pole and, and all of that. Um, so there's the pole and then the, uh, the slate slab with the inscription that, that John Tacco is donating as well.
All right, so then I'll just make a motion that we accept these two gifts from the Veterans Memorial. Second. All right, that's it, that's our agenda for tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, all right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone, on Zoom.